By the doors you come in, there's two items on our agenda tonight. First, a proposal for the Eastern Montana Forensic Mental Health Facility. That'll be the first item up and second, possible residency requirements for department ads. Before we jump into those, just for anybody who's not familiar with our procedure, this is a work session, so our procedure's a little more informal, more of a discussion. We don't make final decisions at these work sessions typically. Often those, we may have a vote, including to give direction to staff. We will have an opportunity for public comment on both of those items when we get into them, but if you need to leave, we'll have an opportunity for public comment up front and feel free to comment then on either of those items as well, or items that are not on our agenda. With that, though, before we jump into public comment, I guess I'll just ask Chris, city administrator, the way of introductions, anything as preliminaries, Chris, before we go to a public comment?
Yes, I did ask Mac, our city engineer, there, right? It's October, construction season's wrapping up. We also, we always appreciate when asphalt can be laid and things can still happen in October and sometimes even early November, but there've been some questions just for an update on some key construction projects. So I asked Mac, I just asked him to come sit at the table to give that briefly, just be a couple of minutes, and then we can turn it back over to the regular agenda.
Very good, and I'll just remind council members and also members of the public to make sure the microphone is close to your mouth, especially with these which are very directional. Try to talk right into the mic and be careful if you turn your head to talk to another city council member, sometimes your voice will get lost and people out in TV land won't be able to hear you. So with that, we'll turn it over to our city engineer, Mac, focus on Mac.
Can you hear me there? Great. Mayor and council, happy to provide a little update. There's lots of construction as you've seen this summer, rapid fire here. So the two-way conversion, we're looking at contract completion this Wednesday, the 22nd. The second question there is, when is the cycle track going to be open? We're still waiting on some green paint. They are doing that work over this next weekend, so I expect that to be open in the middle of next week. There's several paving projects that are complete, King Avenue West, Monad Road.
Mac, hold on a second, Councilmember Kennedy?
Mac, just a, just a quick one. You know, you have the parking so far out that was designed on the downtown area. Who's liable for the people that park on those parking slots and they open up their door and they get hit? Because it's kind of dangerous.
Yeah, there's a, there is a buffer there and we've kind of been watching that at this point now. Obviously, the cycle track's not open, but that's something that we'll probably watch closely as we move forward, but there is a designated space there for that.
No, not on Second and Third. It just, you pull right in and you park and then you open up and there's the lane right there. There is no designated space or whatever. I'm concerned.
Oh, on Second, you mean?
Yeah, you open up your door right into the driving lane if you park along there.
That would be similar to any other, you know, two-way street that we would have with, with parallel parking.
No, I'm not excited about it.
And I could follow up with that if you'd like. So kind of back on the overlays, we have King Avenue West, Monad Road, and Broadwater. Those have some final striping that you'll see going on this week, but then they're completely done. Paving's all done. The chip seals, so there's Pierce Parkway down by Costco, Alkali Creek Road and the area east of 24th Street, those are all chip sealed and striped, complete. Then we have our street reconstruction project that's going on on the south side. That's where we're rebuilding the street. We have our inspector, Mr. Ron Quillo, right here, we're working in his front door. That project, 10th is paved and there's some remaining work on 9th Street and that'll be done by the end of the month, completely. Moving to utilities, the one that's on everyone's mind is the water replacement on Grand Avenue. That should be done by the end of next week and then there's just a little bit of concrete work to do there. The sewer replacement project is complete, all piping is done, we're kind of in cleanup mode. Moving on to storm drain, and this is the work that was funded with our new stormwater fee, so the reconstruction. 36 North of King is complete and open. There's some work going on on Cordova off of Holiday, it's just about wrapped up. We are going to start some new work with some of the irrigation ditches when they turn off, so we have three culvert projects to do there, one of which is off of Country Club Circle on Rimrock Road, so you'll see a little activity there, but those are small, short duration projects. Last but not least, the Hesper Road is closed, making great progress there with our box culverts between the two reservoir sites and the water line. That should be open by Thanksgiving. And last but not least, our safe routes projects are complete. There shouldn't be any traffic control there. There's a little bit of curb paint left and some cleanup items. One last project is the missing sidewalk project on 25th Street. That has about another two weeks to complete. And that, that's the main list.
Mayor?
Sounds like you have a lot to do.
Roy's out there asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Neese.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me. Hey, Matt, of the list of projects, I didn't catch any in the Heights. Do you have any that you're working on? Because I know we get, in the spring, we get a lot of people complaining about their stormwater flooding into their lawn and, and things like that. What type of projects have you got on the list that eventually get done in the Heights?
We, we have a list for next year. I could follow up with that list. These were kind of the current, if you will, FY '25 and dipping into '26 that, that I reported on. There are some others out in the Heights. There's one off of Hard Rock there that, that was kind of a smaller project, but that's actually starting this week and it's, it's like a one-week turnaround, but speaks to the, to the point that you're making. It's, it's one of those sort of nuisance flows and, and helping flooding out in, out in the Heights.
Yeah, if you can give me a list, it'd be great. I'd love to share it with the Heights Task Force, I know it's coming next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mac. Back to Chris.
Yeah, so last one, I'll just touch on, just update on the animal shelter project. So we did complete the cleanup of the incinerator room and industrial hygiene, completed testing, and we should have those results here midweek for Department Environmental Quality to review everything. They signed off on the plan. Now they've got to review ultimately the results, the test results, to see if we get that certificate of fitness from the Department Environmental Quality. So that's the latest on, on that project. And with that, Mayor, he'll turn it back over to you for our regular agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Owen had something?
Just a quick question, Chris. Why did you go out for an RFP on the animal shelter? Okay, listen, I, I was asked that question and I didn't realize we went out for an RFP.
Yes. Yeah, so that decision was made several months back. The, our current contract allowed, I think it was three one-year extensions. We had conversations directly with Y-VAS about the advantages and disadvantages of putting the RFP out in a way that would allow us to sign into a long-term contract with whoever that bidder would be going forward this year rather than sometime next year. So.
And you made that decision to go out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. I was, sorry, I was rebooting my computer at the start of your talk. Did you mention the short-term holding facility?
I did not.
Okay, well then, do you mind if I do?
Please do.
So, just super excited to share tonight that the short-term holding facility opened today and has begun, I'm told there are already people who have been arrested and are being held, waiting to see a judge tomorrow. Thank you to the Yellowstone County Commission for getting this project over the hump and to all of the council members who helped this get done. This is the start of, I think, a very important turn in our community. It is not the end. We need to be working now with our public health partners on those diversion and prevention programs that keep those beds turning over so our officers continue to have the ability to arrest people. But this is a monumental day that has been very hard fought, so just wanted to give huge congratulations to Yellowstone County Sheriff, the Commission, and all of the council members who helped make this a reality. It's a good day.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay, all right, well then we'll move ahead with our agenda. First item up is our public comment on any item. Again, we'll have an opportunity later for the two agenda items, but if you've got anything not on the agenda, or you can't wait until we get to those other ones, feel free. We just ask that you tell us your name and keep your comments to three minutes and... Rosborne?
Yeah, my name is Doug Osborne. I live at 2523 Longfellow Place. I'm here in the new council chambers, which are beautiful. But I kind of liked the old ones because the council was always well below the, the citizens. And now you're slightly above the citizens. I don't think that's the case. I think you guys should and know that you serve us. My, I, I was here 18 months ago. I came six months after that stall cap killing and I was very concerned about the crime in Billings and I expressed those concerns. And since then, is it, keep here, I don't know, since then, I'd have to report that I think things are a little better. I feel safer in Billings, Montana. And I don't, I, I still call Officer Fonte, I won't say regularly, but too often, and tell him about the people in front of my building who are drinking. I don't like that. And my clients don't like it. I want you to clean that up. Chris is a super guy. He's a smart executive, but he also has a lot of moral integrity and I really respect that and I hope we can keep him as long as we can. And I think you guys do yourself a disservice in us when you ask him so many esoteric questions about stuff that doesn't matter. We've had our differences over the years for the most part. You're very accessible, easy to get along with. I give you a high mark on that. But the eight years that you've been here, I don't feel safer. Also, I'm not going to say you gave the middle finger to the third ward people, but I'll say you disregarded them when you appointed someone that didn't, didn't get any votes. Councilman Neese, I was, I'm sorry you're not here. I wanted to thank you very much for taking my call 18 months ago, talking about all this, and you reported that here at the council. I thought, I, I'd never had a representative represent me so well, even though you're not in my ward. But overall, I'd say thank you to the council. I feel better. Keep up the good work.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Rosborne, other public comment at this point?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jim Ronquillo, 820 South 28th Street. Couple of things, I got time anyway. First of all, the gentleman got up and talked about the streets. I want to tell you, they were well overdue. Beautiful job. I want to thank Chris. We took him down to a little project on the south side on 10th Avenue South and it was all city property, but they had a ditch through there and a bunch of old trees and we kind of overlooked it when they bid the job. But I took Chris down there and I want to thank Debbie, I think she left, but you guys did a beautiful job. I've had people come over and say, Jim, look at that job. They put curb and gutter in there, they filled up this old ditch that's been obsolete. So you guys are doing a beautiful job. The street ain't quite done yet, but Mother Nature's holding us back a little bit. But other than that, the south side is getting cleaned up. I really want to thank you for putting that money into it because it's doing really good. Chris appreciates that a lot. The other thing is, I had an opportunity to go to a Big Sky Future deal last Thursday night and I'll tell you what, we had two representatives there, Mr. Kennedy and, I keep forgetting your name, dude, but next to Kennedy there. I don't, and I guess you guys were tied up doing something else, but I thought more of us would have been there. This, this was one heck of a meeting. There was over 300 people at this thing that the governor called in and it's all about electricity. And I think what they're after is the new president we got, he wants to do coal back again, which is fine. And they were all bragging. We had governors from Puerto Rico, Virginia, Tennessee, Alabama, Florida, Montana, but they had one heck of a lot of people there. It was really an interesting economical summit because everybody got up and did their own little talking and stuff. And, and what I wanted to bring to attention was, Mr. Kennedy got to speak and, and you can ask the dude beside him there. He got up and, and they had, this was, they had four people up there. One guy was a facilitator. We had one guy that's a head of a electrical company. We had a gal from Great Falls and one guy from Cold Strip. And the questions they asked were simple and the guy said, well, Mr. Kennedy, we'll start with you. How was Billings? And Kennedy said, you know what? Billings, the city of Billings is open. We're open for business. Anybody want to come there? We welcome you with open arms. We have affordable housing project just going on and lining up in the Heights. We have a new electrical generating outfit out in Laurel that's burning clear air, clean air. He said, we're ready for you. You want to come to Billings? We're open for business. The guy said, oh, thank you. And I thought, well, that's great. So I went to the, next to the gal's to the, from Great Falls. Yeah, I can't remember what her name was, but she was just like a community block grant deal. And the guy asked her, he said, how about you at Great Falls? She kind of looked at everybody and, and now remind you, there's 300 people there. These guys are all electrical businessmen and she says, if you come to Great Falls, bring your own house, because we don't have no houses up there. We don't have no room. So if you want to come to us, come to us. And I thought, damn, man, I wouldn't have her supporting my, my facility. So he said, well, okay. So he went on to the next guy from Cold Strip and he asked him, he said, how about you at Cold Strip? Well, we've got 22,000 people here in Cold Strip, he said, but we haven't got no housing. So if your business want to come here, yeah, we'll have to pass something, try to bill you guys some housing. And I thought, man. And after Bill got done, I thought, you know what? That's one heck of a good speech, inviting people to come to Montana, come to Billings. Our doors are open. So I want to thank him for doing a good job for that because the rest of them people, they ain't got no housing. They don't want business, but we got open arms and you got a pretty good council that you could take a look at it and if these businesses want to come here, by God, we'll let them come in. They're pretty good, so.
Very good. Thank you for those words. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Other public comment? Any other public comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Paul Clark. I live on the south side. I try to come to these meetings a lot more than I used to and I'd like to thank you all for being open. I was a truck driver for a lot of years, that's what took me out of here. Now I don't do that anymore and Mr. Ronquillo says, he says he likes to do other things. So that's where I'm at. I like to do other things. Again, let's not forget, we're celebrating 250 years of military, Navy, Marines. It's a good time. It was very, very nice to see that we're able to protect our borders and also protect our states. Also, that's, that's first. The healthcare facility, sounds like it's, it probably will happen on the eastern side. I'm being educated on that. And my point was, why not in the middle of the state? There sits Lewistown, 700 miles across this beautiful state, 500 miles north and south. Seems like it's right there at the, at the courthouse and is right in the middle. But I get it. We are able to, to absorb this. But what I don't understand is why do we need 15 to 200 acres for something that, we already have something downtown we can build up? Hospitals are going up. We should be able to do that. We don't need to have 100 acres. That would be one. I, I know I'm down to a minute and a half. So, oh, the sewer line, the city came through and worked on 5th Avenue South, went right down my alley, 5th and 6th Street, between 32nd and 33rd. Guys are very friendly, very helpful. One of the things I came up with was, well, how is the quality of my water? And I've brought this up before with me and the well water. People's homes are brown, tainted, it's rust. I've been told that since I was a kid, but is it? It's the sugar factory, it's the refinery, it's the pollution that gets into the water and contaminates our water and soil. Now, I don't drink it anymore, but I used to as a kid. We'd open up the valve, dad said, here you go. I don't think it's that same way anymore. There's something in that water. It stinks. I'm going to have it tested because I can't get a straight answer from anyone and from the city. It's the city of Billings' problem, not the county, not the state, it's the city's problem. We have the sugar factory here for well over 100 years. Besides finding them, thousands of dollars, they wash it away as business as usual. Come on, there are children, there are older people, there are pets, animals, livestock. We all absorb that water. And that's another thing that brings me to the Yellowstone Valley Animal Shelter. This land was given by a man, a very nice donor, I get it, but what did he, he didn't do anything with it either. Why? Because the soil, the water is contaminated. And I will keep building on that. We have to find a way somehow. I don't want to close down Western Shur, I just want them to clean it up. Again, when all the development that's going on in the housing, parks, city parks, you guys that do the developing, put in a park, 5, 10 acres. I got more on my list, but I ran out of time. You guys, blessings. It's election year. You're doing good. I don't see any lot of mud being slung and things are going to go fine and we will see some new council members and a new mayor. That's all I got. God bless.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Clark, and be sure to send the city those test results if you get them. Very good. Any other public comment? Before we close the public comment period? No one's coming forward, last chance. We will close the public commentary, move on to our first item of business. Chris, I have some comments here. I don't know if you did, in the way of preliminaries here at all? Okay.
Well, I, and maybe it would have been more appropriate when we started the meeting, but thank you for all those who clearly figured out that though, for a few minutes, we weren't going to have a meeting tonight. Once we had the conversation regarding a meeting that took place Friday morning, it made sense that we do get together this evening to hear from that. So my apologies for the confusion. Didn't seem to make sense to pull together for the second item exclusively on the agenda, but it made sense for what we have now. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you. I know I, I was not able to attend that meeting, but you and several council members were, so.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Council, what I'd like to do is just give you a little bit of an update on my understanding of where the state is at on this possible Eastern Montana Mental Health Forensic Facility and specifically what happens, at least through my eyes, at our meeting Friday morning that John Forte and Councilmember Ryakowicz sort of jointly emceed, I would say. And once I give you my description and my understanding of, at least my opinion, I think where this is going or where it should go, I'd like to give the opportunity of the other council members who were at that meeting to comment as they would like, correct anything that I say. And then third, we'll turn it over to Councilmember Ryakowicz and John Forte to see if they have any updates or other reaction to our comments. And then fourth, we'll turn it up to the full council to see what it is that the council would like to do moving forward, if anything, on this topic. So, but going back then to some basic background, we learned and we'd been told last week at this meeting, to which all of the council members were invited, that the state is moving ahead with efforts to try to locate a place for the Eastern Montana Forensic Mental Health Facility. And more specifically, DPHHS in conjunction, I assume with the Governor's Office and the Board of Investment, has released a schedule through their www.hb5.mt.gov portal soliciting proposals from cities and counties in Montana for a location. And those applications from local government bodies are due on November 10th with the goal of the state making a decision by Thanksgiving. And yes, that is Thanksgiving of 2025, not 2026. So that was a lot of the discussion at the meeting Friday morning that was attended by, I think, five members of the city council. Councilmember, Commissioner Morris was there for the county, Mark, or Kurt Markagard from Laurel, the city manager in Laurel was there. And then about six to eight legislators, I would say, and staff also from Riverstone Health. And I believe a, there was a general consensus in the room that this is a commendable project. The need is clear. DPHHS released a 15-page report on the need for the facility that is on that hb5.mt.gov portal that provides a lot of the valuable background. Also, we received today, if you have not seen it this afternoon, a memorandum from Senator John Esp, who was at the meeting, and also Senator McGilvery, who was at the meeting, describing some of the relative strengths and weaknesses of cities that might be possible sites for this facility, and I commend that to you if you haven't seen that. Unfortunately, what neither the DPHHS report nor other paperwork that has been generated by the city does is address the potential impacts on local communities, not just Billings, but any place the facility might be located, such things as competition for professional behavioral health services, possible impacts if people are released from the facility, any understanding of how many people would be released from the facility. In my mind, there's some fundamental gaps, like how many people, we, we know it's 32 beds, would it really be 32 beds? I heard possibility of double bunking, so perhaps that immediately doubles the capacity. But how many, what would be the average length of stay and hence, how often would people come out of the facility? And is it true that they would always go to Deer Lodge or back into a jail? Is there any chance that they're going onto the street? And if so, what are the odds that they're going onto the street in the location of the, of the facility? Those are all basic questions that have not been addressed by the city, at least, or I'm sorry, by the state, at least in my opinion. And so I'll turn it to other council members to comment on their interpretation of the meeting. But what I proposed at that meeting and what I would propose to this council is that we not proceed with submitting a proposal that is an application to have the facility located in Billings by that November 10th deadline. I just don't see how that's possible, nor do I think that this is our project and we should be making such a proposal. Instead, I would suggest that we send, before that deadline, a correspondence to the governor, to DPHHS, Board of Investment, expressing our appreciation for their efforts, our understanding of the need for the facility, and also not expressing any opposite, particular opposition to the project. I think we need to keep an open mind going forward, but that we also identify- But that we also identify the need for the state, uh, to answer a lot of questions about those potential impacts and make it clear that it's the state's responsibility to do so with our help as best we can as, uh, uh, willing partners in this investigation process, uh, going forward. I would, uh, suggest that we, uh, work on such a letter, not tonight, but decide how to generate that kind of letter. And, um, uh, again, uh, continue this investigation process. The other thing I would just comment and then I'll stop and turn it to those other council members is at that meeting, there was some question about whether other cities and counties are going to submit an application, um, by the November 10th deadline. I think that's something we need to continue to investigate because that's of interest to us, of course. I did make inquiries of the mayor of, uh, uh, Columbus, and he said, this, uh, Columbus has no current plans to submit an application. I also talked to, uh, Commissioner, uh, Roger Webb in Stillwater County, uh, this morning, and he said similarly, Stillwater County has no current intention to submit an application, uh, at least within that, uh, timeframe. Kurt Markagard, the city manager in Laurel, at the meeting on Friday, said that Laurel was not going to submit an application within that timeframe. I don't know that anybody wants to rule this out at this point. The possibility of someday, uh, hosting one of these, uh, hosting this location, or, I'm sorry, hosting this facility. But at this point, nobody that I know of is looking forward to moving ahead by the November 10th deadline. I can't speak for Miles City, Harden, or other, um, locations. So with that, um, summary, and before we turn it over to Senator Yakowicz and, and John Forte, I just want to ask the four members, uh, uh, who were at the, uh, meeting, that would be councilmembers Boyett, Rogers, Owen, and Rupstus, if you have anything that you would like to correct about what I said or add to, uh, add to it, uh, before we invite our, our guests to comment. That was a start here. Go down this way, Councilmember Boyett.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I, I thought the meeting was really good, but to me, it brought up more questions than it did answers. And that, that was being my, my concern is that I couldn't say anything without more information. That's purely spec, I mean, we need more information. So I agree with that we should say to the governor or to the state that, do I think this is an important facility that should be located in Eastern Montana? Yes. But without additional information, I have to say no.
Very good. Uh, Councilman Rogers?
Um, I think my, I had a lot of questions as well. One of them was regarding the actual, uh, site evaluation that they're asking us to turn in. There's basically the thing that we could fill in is, uh, item one, which is our eligible government mental unit name. Um, everything else, um, we go into infrastructure access and connection costs, detailing the proximity, availability, and quantity and capacity of water, sewer, electric, and transportation infrastructure, documenting detailed cost estimates to connect and operate referenced infrastructure. That's just one. And then we go into, I mean, it just on and on. Community support, pass fail, site suitability, environmental conditions, zoning and permitting. There are, there's no possible way, even if we had a specific site picked out right now, that we could turn in this information. There is no governmental entity that is going to be able to do this unless they had something for the last four years that have been sitting there in that 10 acres getting ready. What they're asking is not possible. And so, um, yeah, I, I agree, we absolutely need this facility in Eastern Montana. But there is a lot more information that's gonna have to happen. There is, um, we're gonna have to talk to neighbors, we're gonna have to identify some sites, we're gonna have to go through zoning and these sorts of things. And I think that's any city that, as Mr. Markagard with Laurel mentioned, that's Laurel is basically out if it has to be happening before, uh, November 10th. So, um, yep, that was my response is we need to wait.
Good, Councilwoman Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I think the memo that came from Senator Esp today was very helpful because it reframed the facility in a way that I think is correct. It is truly a criminal justice facility, not a general mental health facility. And I think that's the right lens for the analysis. And I think it's important because the county's very good and detailed, uh, jail study indicates that even accepting the proposed or the recommended number of beds for jail expansion, we have to continually improve how fast we get cases to trial. And a piece of that is fitness-to-proceed evaluations and stabilization services. Getting people out of the jail and into the Department of Corrections requires pre-sentence evaluation, also intended for this facility. So, I think to the general reframing of this is truly a benefit to the criminal justice system rather than a general expansion of mental health facilities is the right way to analyze this. But it doesn't change the fact that I, from my perspective, and this is what I said at the meeting and will continue to say, we need a genuine partnership with DPHHS. Billings, our criminal justice system will benefit wherever this is built because it is expanded capacity, period. But if it's going to be in Yellowstone County, we have to address its location. I will continue to be concerned about citing this in a residential facility. And I don't know that we have identified any 10 acres that we feel like giving up to the state. We must address workforce now, um, because it, we will need them sooner rather than later. And we have to address, Mayor, as you mentioned, release planning. Release plan, release from the state mental hospital happens now. And I think what I hear from providers is the support for that release is not yet adequate. So we need to beef it up. We need to be very thoughtful about either helping people return to their community of origin or ensuring that they're able to be successful upon release here in our community. All of these things require real partnership. And I think this sort of, uh, sterile application that's very much focused on land use, which is understandable, isn't going to get us there yet. So I would hope, Mayor, that if we do have a letter, as you suggest, that we really stress this need for this to be a mutual planning effort and not just simply a construction project.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Rupstus.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, I, I don't have to echo everything that has been said. But two things. One, one is that, um, to this point of, um, people coming into this facility and leaving. I thought it was pretty clear during the, the meeting on Friday, and I think Senator Esp's, um, memo today really made it clear that these are people that are in the justice system. They're coming from a jail and they're going back to a jail. They're not being released. It is not a, a mental health facility in the, in the, in the sense that they, they get treatment and then they go home, back out into the community, or they're dropped off at the, you know, corner of Broadway and, and First Downtown. So, you know, I think that, that is a, an important clarification that we need to understand. It is, as, as Councilmember Owen said, is part of the judicial system. It is not, um, just a treatment facility that, um, that we should think of in, in that kind of traditional sense. So, uh, just wanted to point that out, um, because I think that makes a big difference in how we think about this and, and how we, or how the community understands it. Uh, because there is a lot of concern right now that these people are just gonna be let out on the streets. And, um, and I didn't get the sense on Friday, nor in the memo this, uh, this afternoon, that it is anything like that. The only other thing I wanted to say as far as the application, I was sitting there Friday, um, looking at this thing, and, and I just kept thinking about this Seinfeld episode where Elaine is, um, uh, invited to a, a wedding in India that's gonna take place in like two or three weeks from now. And it, and it's absolutely not a serious invitation. There's no way you can plan a trip to India in two or three weeks and, and get there and for a wedding. And so it was a non-invite, a non-invite. Um, and I got the sense that that's what this was. It is very easy to understand, uh, the, the timeframes it takes for municipal governments, county governments to put together an application of this word, as Councilmember Rogers, uh, was, was describing. But even logistically, passing something through the council, it can't happen. There's no way. And, and so I think, I, I got the sense that the Board of Investments really knew that and really didn't have to, um, didn't really give anybody a fair chance to do it. If they had really wanted, um, municipalities to, to apply for this, there would have been some more thoughtful approach to, to what timing actually works and how to form that partnership, you know, effectively from the beginning. It might be under a time, tight timeframe, but this just was not a real invitation. So, I would also encourage us to, to, you know, let the, the department know that we do support the project and we see the need for it. But we need to have a more thoughtful approach to how it's, how it's rolled out and planned so that we can get the community behind it and supporting it.
Very good. Thank you. With that, um, uh, Councilman Kenny, do you mind if we hear from our guests? Or was it something specific to what you just heard? We'll, we'll have a chance later. I just, uh, if I open up to you, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to open up to everybody.
You know, I had, I had the opportunity to talk to some folks from, from Helena on Thursday over in Bozeman. And the one thing that came back is, this is a detention facility. But I said, um, what we're looking for is a behavioral health that we can place our commitments. And what I was told is in the white paper that the Department of Health and Human Services put together, he also states in there that there will be, in the future, a, uh, behavioral health wing. Well, if that's the carrot, it's not a very strong carrot to go forward right now. And we need something more solid that it's really gonna happen. And so, you know, with just the one piece, and then everybody forgets about the behavioral health side, I think that's really where we're at. And I expressed my opinion that I really had some concerns over not solidifying that piece of it. Thank you.
Very good. With that, uh, we'll turn it to Councilor, uh, or, uh, Councilmember Yakowicz. You think John should go first? Okay, uh, John, and then Senator Yakowicz. So, John, go ahead.
Hello.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm really grateful to sit at the table with you. It's been a long time since I sat at the table. You know, first of all, I, I, I want to wrap, I only, I do have, you could put me, give me 10 minutes. If, if, and that's it, okay? Make, give, put the time up there. Whoever's doing, you're doing the time. Okay. So, so first of all, I want to wrap, thank you for your time. We've had almost six meetings, um, in the community here. And as a city council member, I don't recall having this nature of a conversation with legislators. We've had hors d'oeuvres with legislators. We've had, uh, the lobbyists come and present. But I, I can't really recall us sitting down and having a conversation, at least not five or six of them. So I think this has been a great opportunity for legislative side and the city council side and community to meet. I'd like to, and thank you, thank you for that time. Second part, I wanted, the labor is compassion. Because we're not just talking about bricks and mortar. We're talking about my constituents. We're talking about someone's mom or dad, someone's son or daughter that we're dealing with. So, so it's more than, more than just a, a wall or an organization or a facility. There are citizens and they're the members of our state of Montana. The, the third part of that is that this is what the governor had asked of collaboration. So, we need to continue to collaborate. I don't think we're there yet on a trust level that we really need to build between council and legislature. But when we can get to that level, I think we can move mountains. And it takes a lot of effort and energy to build that up. Trust takes years to build and weeks to lose. So, I really want to cash in on trust and reassuring and letting you know that we have the back of our community. Because of the 20 legislators, we live in this community. We're as committed as the county commissioner or county commissioners or the city council. What I wanted to kind of highlight a few things, uh, the myths, Mythbusters. The, the, the Warm Springs is not gonna close down, okay? It's, it's actually, I could give you another report. That would be another two minutes later, if you want me to. But there's a lot of good things happening in Warm Springs. We have, we're hiring nurses, we're investing millions of dollars into restoration. We're, we're, we have a new CEO. There's a lot going on there. So when someone says, well, look at what you did there, yeah, we're doing really good. It fell apart due to governors and legislators in the past, but it's really getting back on its feet. It will apply December 31st of this year for the, um, Medicaid funding. So, so that's great. This will be a locked-in facility. Don't need to go in too much. It'll be 32 beds, it will be 10 acres. And, and it will be, I like to call it a justice hospital. Because it's a hospital locked in to take care of people. It's a treatment center. Along with that, people are sent by the judge. They're adjudicated. So it's not just someone who just goes there, knocks on the door and let me in. They have to be sent by the judge. And we have to realize, yes, it can be filled in 30, in, in, in 30 days or whatever. That's good. Why do you build a hospital if nobody attends? Do we build a hos-? No. We want a hospital where people can come. But I think there's a misunderstanding that it's a rotation. And if, if you have a chance to really read the white paper of what, uh, Chair, um, Director Barrington gave, there's a potential 106 to 170 people that will enter and leave this facility in one year. So I, I really want to encourage you to read this. And why I ask you is, I read this three times so far. Every time I read it, I understand it more. So if you read it once, thank you. But I really like you to read it more because there's a lot of myths that's going on out here. The, the other thing is, um, um, we're looking at 72 employees. I, I think that we're, we're wrapping our mind around, maybe there's more. Senator Esp did a study of Galen and they have 50 beds and they hire 70 people. So, maybe it's more. I, 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 what we're see, trying to compare apples to oranges here, they're looking at around 70 now. That's what I, we read in this paper from Senator Esp. It could be more. But why I say is economic development. You know, I've been talking with Besida about this. This is economic development. Who, who wants to turn down 72 jobs? I mean, I just, I think that's another level of, beyond politics is economy. And it's not just people hired to do, be psychiatrists, it's the drivers, it's the food people, it's the janitors. There's a lot of people who can step up to the plate. Mayor, you made a great point about, uh, we have shortages and we have competition. Do we say to the Coca-Cola company, don't, don't come here because we don't have enough jobs? Like I think, uh, Mr. Ronquillo brought up, we bring in jobs, we want people to work. And there's competition. Take care of your employees, uh, pay them well. And, and, and yes, we can work on that. This is part of the gaps and Mr. Forte will work on that. But I, I think that, um, even as, as council, when I was in council, I didn't think about, you know, as part of helping you with this building, there was a lot of questions, but at some point, we had to just go forward. And we had a lot of people, naysayers saying, no, you shouldn't do it, it'll cost too much. You know, who's gonna fill it? There's a point of leadership where we just make the decision. Okay, well, the other, the other part I just want to wrap you around or think about is that this is for people who are adjudicated, they go to prison, they'll go there to be evaluated. And then they either go back to jail if they're, if they're healed, and then they go to court, or if they're in a serious situation, they go to Galen. When they are released, they're released back to that jail that they came from. And then they go from there to address court, to go to court. So, a lot of detail, I know, and I really respect you for that. But sometimes I hear myths out there that I think, at least what I'm understanding more of, how people transition out. The white paper was very clear for 12 people were released from our, from the community in, in, in Montana because we failed to treat them. And I think this is an important part of leadership. We have people in our jail, I think 16 or more, we could face ACLU lawsuit. We could face lawsuits if we don't take care of people and treat them, however, or, or their release because they're not treated into the community. So, there's a timeframe there that I think, again, reading the white paper is very important. Why this is important to our community and why it's important to our state. Maybe, maybe I'll leave it at that. You know, I, I would like it, maybe come back to why I think it's important to have it here in Billings. Um, I, thank you for allowing me to share a little bit of this because this is a little bit of a highlight. Some of you have been to the meeting, some of you have been there just once, some of you. And thank you for whatever time you came along. But again, I'm studying it, I'm learning it, and I'm gonna turn it over now to the smartest guy, one of the smartest guys I know, Mr. Forte.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Yakowicz. I do want to call attention to what you all have in the packet in front of you real quick. First and foremost is the behavioral health facility gap analysis. And we made some quick assumptions in this. I told the senator and, uh, all the legislators in the room, this is the fastest group project I've ever done in my career. And the fact that we got about 30 different behavioral health providers in groups around this town and county to come together to build it, uh, shows you how important this need is. You know, the, the need for this facility is not in doubt. But I, here tonight and going forward, not only as a public health officer for the city and the county, but as a behavioral health provider, represent this behavioral health working group. None of this is branded. This isn't a Yellowstone County, City-County Health Department issue. This isn't a Riverstone Health issue. This is a systemic issue across a behavioral health continuum of care. And we are gonna continue working on this, continue demanding answers. The whole point of the meeting on Monday, Councilmember Boyette, was to ask questions. And to say, we have a hell of a lot more questions that we need the state to answer. And so, that's the other reason I'm here tonight, is to get those questions, to have them written down. I have asked multiple times myself, through DPHHS's channels. We've asked through legislative channels. But I think Mayor Cole is correct, we need to ask collectively, from the city and from the county, with the commissioners, to say, here are all of the issues we see with this facility coming here. This is not just a real estate deal. This is human lives that need help. And in a behavioral health system, that needs massive improvement. And while we've put, at the state level, thank you legislators, you know, $300 million into investing in behavioral health for future generations, what are we gonna have to prove for it? And that was the collective effort behind the gap analysis, to say, here are the issues that we know we have. Here are some of the gaps. We know we have workforce and education issues. Pre-release planning and care coordination gaps. Step-down capacity and wraparound service gaps, as well as issues with payment. Whether that's Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance authorizations. And so, all of this is collected in your packet today. The white paper that Senator mentioned is here from DPHHS. It's the Blue Report, prioritizing forensic capacity to solve a systemic bottleneck. And you're right, this timeline is just unrealistic. I agree with you. The working group agrees with you. How did we get here, though? And I think the process came to light to me last week, when we met on Friday. And the legislators said, well, we passed a bill. We told BOI, the Board of Investments, and DPHHS, to go do this. And go do it now, because the need exists. Nobody is saying that we don't need this. So, that's fair. However, I think there's a right way and a wrong way to do things. And having the state tell us, oh, we're gonna put it in Yellowstone County, and it's probably gonna be Billings, was the first red flag to read in the Billings Gazette. Not a phone call to Commissioner Morse, or to Mayor Cole, but a newspaper headline, which triggered the creation of this behavioral health working group. So then we were able to start building a collective effort and ask questions. We've identified a bunch of gaps, we've found more. We've realized that some of our initial assessments and assumptions were wrong. Particularly with, as it relates to staffing. So, the staffing numbers that came out today are actually a good thing. Much less need than we initially determined. But now we're down to this, you know, proposal for a site. And it's our turn, as a community, both city and county, to ask those questions of the state, to say, this is an unrealistic timeline. Please help us help you. We want to work together. The number one thing that this is not about is resistance. This is not Yellowstone County's behavioral health system, or city council, or county commissioners, saying, not in my backyard, you know, not under any circumstance. I think the collective knows that we need this, but we want to do it correctly. And we want to do it so that it's sustainable, to meet some of the systemic gaps that we have. Councilmember Kennedy pointed out, we do need civil commitment beds at some point down the road. But we want that to be done correctly, in the right way, so that we can build that capacity and go forward. So, you'll see a bunch of different notes and items here, but if you read one thing, take a look at the meeting notes from the Behavioral Health Facility Work Group meeting. And at the end of that, not only does that break down some of the gaps, that we're gonna continue working on as a community, the group is gonna continue meeting, no matter if this facility gets put on hold or gets built tomorrow. We're gonna continue working to address these gaps, because it's the right thing to do for our community. But the last two pages, four and five, talk about some additional assumptions and notes based on what we know so far. And it talks about length of stay, it talks about folks being justed, justice-connected, and why these, these patients are already here. They're in the jail, they're in short-term holding, or they're on the streets. And this facility will allow us to build capacity to make sure that we can get them into treatment, get them into care, with the long-term goal of rehabilitation and productive members of society.
Very good. Thank you. I should have said before, we've got another partner in the room that plays a critical role in this, and that's Yellowstone County. The county puts more dollars towards behavioral health needs than the city by far, and also is responsible for managing our much over-capacity jail. So, we're fortunate to have Commissioner Waters with us, and Commissioner Waters, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the city council. And First Senator Yackovic and John Forte, thank you all for being here. I, I would just, I've come because we've had real concerns about this from the very beginning. There's been a lot of information coming from the state, actually. But what I haven't seen from the state is a real commitment of resources. A commitment to partnership, to doing this. And what, we all can say that, yes, we need more capacity. But the real commitment from the state is when they do get released into our community from, from Galen now. And when they do, they are not always well-planned, they are not well, there's not wraparound services. The, the gaps that were identified, that John pointed out, and even when you read the, the analysis from the state, and the, the letter from Senator McGilvery and Senator S., they talked about a lot what's, what's already being done, but, but it doesn't identify the real needs and the commitments necessary from the state of Montana. They're gonna come in here with a forensic facility that we would need to have a real partnership, that it would not strain further our already strained mental health resources in Yellowstone County. That's why we've had such a real concern of it. Yes, I, I understand these are, these are, they're somebody's sons, somebody's daughters, brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers. It's not that we don't have compassion, it's just that we don't want them, it not to be done the right way, as John pointed out. Because they will then end up back in our jail at some point, or somebody else's jail. I, I don't say that they're all coming into, into our community, into our county, and into our city. But the things that, that we, we've done a lot of work since shining a light on this, and we've identified the gaps, and the state only usually responds with information on the need for increased capacity, but not a commitment, partnership with addressing the need to commit resources to help us, help them, as John pointed out. I'll try to keep this brief. I know your guys' time is valuable, and, and it was heartening to me that you guys are asking the right questions that, that we've been asking as well. And, and hope that, as, as we do go forward in this, that we don't commit to something, that we don't have a, a committed partner with the resources from the state going forward. So, thank you all. Appreciate it. Each and every one of you in the, in the fight every day of local government. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. I'm gonna open up for public comment. There may be other members for the, of the public who want to comment on this topic. Then I'm gonna ask other members of the council how you would like to proceed. Is there any public comment on this item number one at this time? If so, please feel free to come to the podium, keep your comments to three minutes, tell us your name. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment at this item before I close the public comment period? Any public comment? No one is coming forward. We'll close the public comment period. Council, how do you want to proceed? Councilmember Boyette?
I, I-
Governor Shaw?
So, Senator Yackovic, you're in, pretend you're back where you were, we were at, right now. We're gonna ask you, where, where is the state, after they've heard you, the state, have listened to all this? Obviously, it doesn't sound like anybody's gonna fill out this application. Where is the state then? What is their next step? How are they gonna proceed forward to become a partner again? What do you think, Mike?
We got it? Okay. So, so, thank you again for asking, and what, what I'd like to first point out is that I actually talked with Charlie Brereton's secretary. And Implord asked, please come here, because the commissioners want to meet him, the council wants to meet him. And, and I believe the genuine answer was, we are involved in a procurement. And he cannot get involved in this process right now. The concept, although arduous in filling out the RFP, the state has to do this in other ways too, is that he, if he gives us, if he comes here to give us advice or sway us, then he'd have to go to Columbus and other places too. So, I just want to let you know that he, he's, he's listening. I would behoove you to read the white paper again and again, because there's a lot of answers, I think, that we have here. If you're asking me, I, I believe you're on the right course. Can I, would, answer his question? Okay. That you're on the right course here, because, yeah, you're putting your brakes on here a little bit, fairly. The Commissioner, thank you, commissioners, for helping us in this process. It's been, it's been collaboration. And so, we're letting the state know that there are issues. Mr. Forte has talked directly or indirectly with DPHHS about the gap analysis, and they got it. So, so in some ways, I believe that you're on the right course to, to be frank. You're in election season. I think it's good to let the election season pass. And then come, circle back next month to revisit this RFP and revisit this situation. Because I don't think pounding the square into a round hole, square pagan, round holes may not work. But the process is studying this RFP to see how you can fill it out. Because in the best-case scenario, if Southside Mike was on the table here, I could, I would have got six of you on my side, and three months ago, start working on it. But we got delayed for, for good reasons, let's just say. But in the best-case scenario, a city would say, ah, this is awesome, economic development, good for the community. And they would have been on, been able collaboratively to find everything. So, that didn't happen. That's water under the bridge. But I would say, go forward with what you're doing and asking more questions, and we can send them up the flagpole.
Did I answer your question? Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, you can come back. Councilmember Sean, Councilor Aspliter?
Uh, thank you.
Councilwoman Roger?
Yeah. Mayor, I would go with your suggestion initially. I, I really strongly feel like the city should not fill out this RFP for a number of reasons. One is, this isn't the city's proposal. And so I'm very concerned about us getting into a situation where in five, eight years, we have a legislature look back and say, we don't really want to fund this anymore. The city of Billings asked for this. They should fund it now, or Yellowstone County should fund it now. Which I think is quite concerning, because, yes, there's money appropriated for the building. But to go to Commissioner Waters' point, we don't have any commitment of funding for the operations of the facility. So, I mean, worst-case scenario, the state builds a facility, doesn't appropriate money to run it, sells it off, gives it to the county, gives it to the city, and suddenly, we've created a whole local government issue that the city didn't ask for. So I, I'm with you on the compassion, I'm with you on the need for it. I, there's no disputing that at all. But to me, this level of asking us to identify land, coming up with zoning and permitting, all of this is way far ahead of where I think we're at. And just in good faith of trying to work this process the best we can. So, that would be my opinion, is I think the letter is the way to go. Because I think any way we try and put together an application, I see trouble down the road for this. I'm concerned about legal trouble down the road for the city. And I don't want to saddle a future council with that issue, and have them look back and wonder why we did that. So, that would be my suggestion, is there's nothing I heard anybody say that I disagreed with. I think we could collaboratively, or the mayor, I think, could write a letter that we send around, or however it works. But that would be my suggestion, is that's the path that we head down.
Very good. Councilwoman Aspliter, Councilwoman Roger?
Yeah, I, and I've, I've been in the middle and kind of on both sides of this issue from the start, six months ago, to where we sit today. And the one guy that I've, I've really appreciated in, in this process is Dan Villa with Board of Investments. I mean, Dan has shot straight. I think Dan's been put in a lose-lose situation from the Board of Investments. I mean, he's been given $26.5 million to build a facility. He is a real estate developer. He is not gonna operate the facility. He's not gonna be able to answer any of the questions that we've ever asked him. And he's told us that, from the beginning. And he and the Board of Investments put a plug in this, even for all of those reasons. Because he came here and he got, he caught bullets from all sides. And realized that he was not given the tools to properly address the community. And so I appreciated the Board of Investments putting a pin in this thing until they got more direction. I still don't think they've gotten a lot of direction, and their approach to this has been, okay, well, let's, instead of telling Billings we're gonna put it here, let's see what communities want it. And, good in concept, bad in practice. Because of, all of the same questions still exist. And the Board of Investments is not the right person to try to answer these questions, DPHHS is. Senator Yackovic, where I would disagree with you is the unwillingness of DPHHS to come and meet with these communities and answer those questions is not a matter of procurement. I think that's a facade. That's an easy excuse to, to shy away from the hard conversations that need to happen with the local communities that they want interested in, in having this. I don't know why, there's a refusal to engage in that level of partnership with local government. But that's where the trust breaks down. And that's not the legislature's fault. That's DPHHS's fault, and that's the governor's fault, at, at this stage of the game. And until that level of commitment to sit down and have those meaningful conversations with our community leaders and our county leaders happens, I don't see this ever getting to that point with any community. Because we're all gonna have this, this issue. So, I, I think DPHHS has to quit hiding behind those excuses, and, and has to actually come out here, into the hinterlands, away from the ivory tower in Helena, and come meet with the people. And talk to the people. And, and build that relationship. We have a relationship with you. I love Southside Mike. Contributed to your campaign a number of times, as a matter of fact. Because I love the work that you do, and I love your commitment to the community. This isn't a referendum on the legislature trying to fix a problem. It's a referendum on how this, how this process is trying to be implemented in a, in a very clunky and a non-partnership fashion. This is, once again, Helena telling us what they're gonna do in our community, without collaborating with us from the get-go. And, and that, that, that is where I continue to, to struggle with this process. And it's, and it's why I, I don't agree that we should be engaging in these conversations in any fashion until we actually get some meaningful collaborative conversations. I mean, every time in the last four years, Yellowstone County or Billings has asked for help from the state of Montana, and you're only one of 20 legislators out of our community, and you're only 20 out of 150 in that building. We have got our zero, bupkis, in support. We have the biggest jail problem in the state of Montana, and we can't get any support. We, we get all of the requests, because we have the, the biggest network of services in the state, we get all the problems. And, and it's easy for the state to say, yeah, let's go to Billings, let's go to Billings. But when Billings comes back, and Yellowstone County comes back and says, hey, we need some, we need support on some of these other issues in our community. Whether it be mental health services, whether it be our hospitals, whether it be our infrastructure, whether it be our jail system, that, I mean, we're gonna spend, we're gonna go to our taxpayers and ask for a boatload of money. a boatload of money for a jail that we desperately need to keep our community safe. The state of Montana never shows up for Yellowstone County. But they want us to take it because we have this perceived service network that is cap, it's tapped out. And, and so, until the state of Montana is willing to come and help us, I can't continue to be, to feel like I need to help the state of Montana when the state of Montana is never there for us at the local level. You guys do the best you can to represent us in Helena, and I'm eternally grateful for the work that you do. But the rest of the state, I think, needs to also understand the stress that our community and our taxpayers and our constituents live in. And the affordability that these things stress on our system. And, and so, I can't support it until the state of Montana is willing to be a real partner in this. And that's not, that goes beyond just sitting across the table. That means coming to the table with something to offer us, instead of us always being asked to offer them.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Rogers, Councilmember Kennedy.
I want to second what Scott said about being just grateful for you guys kind of wrapping around, being willing to have the conversations with the, with the city and the county. That's kind of an unprecedented deal, and I hope the evidence of things to come. And I do have to say that whether this goes in Billings, Laurel, Stillwater County, it's still gonna go in Billings. I mean, we are going to be the ones, our services, our wraparounds, the nonprofits, all of the governmental agencies are still going to be the ones trying to help support this. So, it's, it's almost a misnomer to say whether it's in Billings or Laurel, it's, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. That being said, that's, we need it. We know that we need it. I have a dumb question, and I'm not a politician, and this is where this is coming from, so I apologize about this. If no other cities apply, does the state just decide where they're gonna put it?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. My thinking would maybe if nobody applies, they would circle back and may hopefully come to a table or two and re, have people to reapply. But that, I don't know.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
I would just hope we keep our powder dry. You know, this facility is a state responsibility. And it's a state responsibility to have the forensic hospital. It'll never be locally run, or we will never take responsibility for it. It's in statute, it's the state's. But the whole thing is, we were six, eight months ago, and the committee you were on, Senator, started talking about the mental health and how we can have some expanded services. And then it seems like legislature gave us one small thing. And then said, it would be nice just to have that one small thing right here in Billings, Montana. I guess I have some real concerns on it. Because I was anticipating that the whole bill would actually have the behavioral health side of it is what we need the most. With our commitments, that's where we spend the most money. I was a commissioner for 24 years. Commissioner Waters is paying the bills now for all the commitments going up to Warm Springs. People in this county pay a lot of money for those commitments. And all we're getting out of it is a forensic hospital. I think we, we sit, let it sit, draw a little bit of dust for a while, and then as people circle around, we may be able to, as Councilman Aspilider said, maybe we'll get, be at the table and talk about this a little bit more. And maybe there will be something that we really do need in, in Billings. So, at this time, I, I'm gonna go with the rest of everybody and say, I don't think we'll go forward with the proposal.
Okay. I am not hearing anybody arguing in favor of trying to submit something by November 10th. So, that leaves a question of whether we just sit on our hands or whether we make some sort of communication to the state. Councilmember Neese, sorry, I didn't see your little yellow hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I agree with a lot of what has been said already. And some of the key points, I think, Mayor, you mentioned about the discharge process. And, and right out of the white papers, it says that they're gonna be discharged. At the time they get discharged, they go to their home or to supportive services. We all know supportive services are Billings, Montana. So, no matter if their home is in Circle, Montana, they're gonna come to Billings, Montana because we have the supportive services. And the state doesn't do anything to ensure the supportive services are throughout the community. It's great that they're now trying to have this, this forensic hospital on the eastern side of the state. That's great. But they're not doing anything to make sure supportive services are in local communities. And so, communities like Billings gets those, gets those new residents coming, because then when they, they, as a recidivism, they become, they're now citizens of Billings, and then from then on, they get released back to Billings. And so, I think this is a, never any circle of the state has created over, over decades of time that they need to try and address. And that's our senators and representatives who should be fighting that cause for us. Now, you know, I think if we, I think if we refuse to say anything to them, I guess this is where I disagree on the, say nothing to them. I think we need to tell them, no, we do not want it in Yellowstone County. Because we don't want, we wanted this to be as far away from Billings to try to get these, whatever supportive services are out there, they don't come back into Billings area. Because the state's not doing their job by ensuring that supportive services are in local communities. And so, I think our letter should be, yeah, we have a lot of questions, and we don't want to see it here unless you've answered a lot of these questions and started addressing the issue where these people go back to their community once they're released, so they're supportive and that. So, I think if we don't, if we say nothing, the state's gonna build it in Billings, Montana. Because in their mind, that's where they came first, that's where it belongs. If no one else says anything, they're just gonna come here. The state really can do what they, they want to do unless we step in with some kind of court action. They're gonna do what they want to do. So, my opinion would be to try to tell them that, no, we don't want it here.
Okay, thank you. So, we kind of have one no vote, as opposed to call it neutrality at this point. Councilmember Boye?
I would follow up with the Councilmember Shazrick, that we do send a letter that said we, we acknowledge the need in eastern Montana that we will not be filling out the application for a number of reasons. One of, we don't have the information, enough information going forward. And at this point, we're not satisfied to have this in, in our city at this point. But we do need to follow up with a letter.
Okay. And I assume identifying some, what the need, at least in general terms, for additional information would be. Okay.
Phone's not on. This is summary of high-impact gaps on page five of this document. I think gives us pretty much all the headlines we would need of, these are all the areas we need more information on before the city would overwhelmingly say, yes, you've answered all of our questions. Wonderful. So, I appreciate this, John, that you...
All right. I'm not gonna treat that as a motion at this point. We're kind of talking about framework, but we get to come back to that at some point. Councilmember Ripses?
Mayor, actually, I want to ask John about that, about this, what Kendra just said. My read of the gap analysis isn't that these are questions we have about this proposed facility. But these are gaps in our community that exist regardless of whether or not this facility goes in, and that we need help addressing them. Maybe in exchange for, you know, supporting this community coming here, or this facility coming here, we want your partnership on these other issues. But I didn't read the gap analysis as questions that we have about the facility. Did I understand that correctly, or?
It's twofold. It's, it's both. It's both gaps that exist in our system, you know, systemic needs across the continuum of care. And it's also addressing, hey, if this facility comes, we have all these gaps, how can we work to fix those? And so, we've had conversations, Councilmember Owen and Department of Labor, with some workforce and job analysis, that, that type of data. We still don't have a concrete report from the state, but we're working on it and hope to have it by the time we meet again. Friday, we had a bunch of questions from folks that were in the room, and I made note of those, said, here are the issues, here are the things that we have to work on. And that was kind of drafting up those questions that all of you even asked this evening for a potential letter to the state from the city, from the county, to ask the questions and say, please, please give us more information.
So, more information in writing, right? Because I think that's, that's what we haven't gotten. We can say that there are, we have workforce issues in the community, and this facility may challenge our already stressed service providers with, you know, competitive workplace issues, that then everybody ends up kind of worse off. But I think we heard that those might not be as significant with the, the size of the facility. You know, maybe that's, that workforce that this facility might demand might not be as serious as we thought. So, but getting those, getting that information in writing from the, from the state, saying this is the size and the facility and the types of employees we'll need and this kind of stuff, will help us understand what the impact will be on the community.
Correct. Those are the questions we need answers. Those, whether, you know, I've tried to set up some meetings and have conversations. Senator Yakowicz has tried to do the same. I know Senator Lenz is willing to hand-deliver whatever memo letter we write from the state, from the, or from the city or from the county, directly to Director Brereton and DPHHS to get those answers. Because, you know, Councilmember Aspinley is right, it's not, BOI can't give us those answers. They're, they're doing a real estate deal. DPHHS has to say, this is the facility I'm building, these are how many beds. Just like I at Riverstone, if I was building a new clinic, I would have to tell my board and everybody engaged, how many staff I'm hiring, how many beds we're gonna have, what are we actually gonna do there. We need that clarity.
Okay, I'm gonna turn over to Councilmember Owen, but Council, I'd recommend we bring this to a close. Been talking about this for an hour. I think we're ready to make a decision to move on to our next item. Councilmember Owen?
Yeah. Mayor, if I could just throw out maybe an option here for us that I would like, I would like to see reflected in the letter, and Senator Yakowicz might actually give you some hope that we can move forward on some trust-building work. I agree that the idea that, that DPHHS can't talk to communities is a red herring. I don't think that's a serious position. But I'm not here to argue with them about it. However, I think the reality of the population base is that if this facility is built in eastern Montana, there will be a workforce impact in Yellowstone County. It's where the population base is, right? We could have a conversation with DPHHS right now to start building workforce programs, agnostic, site-neutral, put it where you put it, but we know there will be an impact on workforce here. I appreciate the perspective that this is economic development. My concern is that it's economic strain. We couldn't hire 20 nurses now if we needed to. There's, there's openings for nurses everywhere. The workforce question is inevitable, and I think is, it exists whether, wherever they put the site. If DPH doesn't want to come talk to us about the concerns that are site-specific, that's fine. But they could come talk to us right now about how we build workforce programs together. What types of positions this facility will specifically need, what types of them can be credentialed, let's get our high schoolers working on that, what types of incumbent workers need to be skilled up to be in a psychiatric facility instead of a direct medical facility. We could actually have meaningful workforce conversations today that have nothing to do with the site. And so, I would like to see that, Mayor, included in the letter, an invitation to talk about something that has nothing to do with sites, so that we start opening this up, and so that, quite frankly, we're prepared. Because no matter where this site goes, I'm afraid we will feel more strain than benefit. Acknowledging the criminal justice benefit that I think is beyond argument. There's definitely a benefit to our system, but the workforce issue, I, I think we could address now.
Very good. I'm gonna suggest we get a motion on the table, so we can vote for that, or address that. Councilmember Shaw?
I'll make a motion. I guess my question is, who's writing the letter? Mayor, is it you, or is it staff?
That could be part of your motion. I, I guess I would recommend that it not involve staff too much, because they haven't been directly involved in this. They've got other things to do, and Chris is agreed with that wholeheartedly.
I will make a motion that the mayor will draft a letter based on this discussion.
With assistance.
With assistance, as needed, from staff, obviously legal, and any other council members you want to pull in or distribute to all of us, whatever. You can use your discretion, I guess. I'll leave it, I'll leave that open.
Okay. And, second by Councilmember Rogers, obviously, we've had some general discussion about the content of that, and I'm assuming, you know, whatever draft would need to reflect that. So, and, and let's make it clear as part of the motion...
Let's make it clear, yes, that you will distribute that to the entire council.
Yes.
Over email, I think, is fine.
It would be reviewed before...
Yeah, being sent off.
Okay, very good. Discussion now on that motion. Time frame? Before, before November 10, obviously.
Yes, before November 10. Yeah. I think before their deadline.
Okay.
And I'd just like to add, obviously, we need to loop Riverstone in with this as well. I think John's got a really clear understanding of those issues, and it'd be a huge resource.
Yeah, I think it'd be important to keep Riverstone and Senator Yakowicz in the, in the loop.
And Mayor, to that point of good communication, the timeline provided hereby, as a part of this application process, indicates there will be an interim committee hearing on November 5th. If this topic is on the agenda, we might want to listen or open up the conversation. And we should be engaged in that hearing if this is in fact a topic for the interim committee.
Very good.
Just so that we show that we're partners.
Could keep us educated on that, or the, on the status of that one.
Mayor, just, you'll be, I'll be up there on the 5th, and there'll be time for public comment. So, I'd really like to just encourage you to, to be aware of that. Put your name down, and absolutely, that would be a good chance. Perhaps you'll be talking about, you should give a report, Mr. Brereton. Within that may, or may not be, the behavioral health facility, but I think you're right on. That's a good time, all of you, if you want to, or just chime in at this certain point, a public comment. Because if you miss a public comment, then it's down the road someplace.
Good idea. Thank you for alerting us to that. Councilmember Ripses?
Mayor, I wonder, would it be useful to have this letter prepared even for presentation too, at that committee?
Probably. Okay, any other discussion on the motion before we vote? Seeing none, if in favor of the motion, I won't try to restate it, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. All councilmembers present voting in favor, and thank you, everybody who's worked on this project, and will continue for some time. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, John. You may be dismissed. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item up is our residency requirements for department heads. This was a Councilmember Kennedy initiative. I will turn it to Councilmember Initiative, or to Councilmember Kennedy to describe his initiative, and specifically, if there is a motion tonight, to tell us exactly what that motion would be. So, Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you very much. I did go, I've been working with the local government group up in Bozeman, at MSU Bozeman. And she was the lady that gave me the resolution from the city of Helena. I see Councilman Ripses already said that it's not, they rescinded it, but that doesn't make any difference. The resolution, what the city of Helena did is, and there's a couple of things that I think are very important. I passed it out to all of you. So, if you would just look at, the second whereas is the Helena City Commission desires that department director-level employees, or the highest-paid city employees, contribute to the economic growth and development of the city. And then, they go on to the next whereas, and on there, department director-level employees be required to reside within the Helena city limits for the duration of their employment of the city. of the city. And I would ask that our department heads would do that. I, Chris sent out a memo today that said 73% of department heads live in Billings, that leaves 27% that live outside the city, city of Billings. I just was wondering, why would people want to work for the city and work to improve the city, but not want to work, live inside the city and be able to go forward and pay taxes and everything in the city? I, I have a concern on that, I, but I'd, I'd like you to go to Section 5, and Section 5 is an area that I was talking about with a few council people, that the city manager may waive the continuous residency requirement of this resolution if the top applicant for a director-level position has, and it, and it has, has a highly desirable qualifications, is a resident of the county or at the time of the application, is a current city employee promoted into a director-level position. I think that would address some of the issues of two of the three that are living outside the city of Billings. My whole thing is, the city of Billings is a great city. The city of Billings has some problems, but it also is a great place to live. Why wouldn't the people that at the top level of the city want to live in the city that they're working for and want to know all the ins and outs of the city? It would just be like having all of you council people that you can or can't live in your, in your ward, because if you don't live in your ward, you may not know what's going on in your ward, but we're required to. As a county commissioner, I was required to live in the certain area, and I, and because I was a county resident, I lived in a certain area, I just couldn't pick up and move elsewhere. I could decide not to be in that position, they could decide they didn't want this job, but I do have to say, on our upper level, we pay $160,000 all the way up to over $210,000 for department heads. That's pretty lucrative salaries in the city, and I just think you get a better feel of the city if you're living in the city and you represent it. I understand there's other arguments out there, that people say, well, this guy wants to take the job and he's just our top person, but he doesn't want to live in the city, but he wants top pay in the city of Billings to run a department. I still have a tough time with that. But what I bring to you tonight is, I would rewrite this resolution and put it for the city of Billings, but I'd like it, at least permission to go on to the agenda, our next business agenda, and you can vote it up or down. And I'll even type it up so I don't use staff time, and then, and go from there. I really do think it's, it's very important. I've had people ask me, as I was going door-to-door, well, the, the city administrator doesn't live in Billings, and I'd had to tell them, he does live in Billings. Well, when you were first coming in, I think you had a house in Bozeman, and you had a house here. So, it was, it's been on, and how many years have you been here, seven? And it's still on people's minds. And so, people do want people that represent him and work for him, and I'm not saying every employee, all I'm saying is the directors that direct these departments. So, that's my, I would ask that you move it forward to, to a board, a regular board meeting, and then you have your chance to throw anything you want at it, and then move it forward. I'm not asking for staff time, I'll type it myself and have it ready to go. But I really do think it's important, and it's important on a lot of people's minds that I have talked to.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Councilmember Kennedy, what I'm hearing is a motion to put a Helena-style resolution on a future business agenda.
It's actually a motion to put a, a resolution on for a requirement for all director, director-level employees to be residents of the city.
Okay, and just that?
Yeah, the Helena doesn't need to be in there. I'm, this is just a draft, and I'll get you a, a Billings resolution.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Rogers. So, that's the initiative, and you have a motion before you, council. Councilwoman Kennedy has spoke to the motion. Councilwoman Rogers, do you want to speak to the second?
Just briefly, I think we, our departments, our, our staff, our elected officials are all doing a lot of work to make Billings a great place, and I think if it's a problem for our directors to live here, that's a marketing issue. Billings is a great place to live, and we need to, we need to have them invest in that as well.
Very good. This is on the table now, so, Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, I, I have a, I have a question. So, my under, I, I guess I'm learning this tonight, this resolution in Helena was rescinded at some point recently? Okay. Of the other major Montana cities, who else does this, has this policy? Missoula, Bozeman, Great Falls, anybody else?
Actually, Kalispell has, most of them have city manager restrictions, residence requirement. Helena was the only one that had done this that I've found so far.
For the directors?
Other, other places across the country do it.
No, I understand that, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get the lay of the land for Montana, so we'd be the only major city in Montana implementing this restriction. Okay. And then, I, I'm not going to vote for this, I, I appreciate, I really appreciate the not taking up staff time, two thumbs up to you, that's wonderful. But my first thought is, you know, if you come to Montana and want to own a horse, you can't live in the city. That seems like a really kind of mean line to draw, in my opinion, for a director of, well, too bad, like whether you want to own a horse or not. So, to me, I, that would be a very valid reason to live in the county yet work for the city, because that's just a restriction that we don't allow, and it's a lifestyle issue. So, that for me is a line in the sand.
Okay, further discussion now on the motion. Councilwoman Rowan?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions. I, I hate researching things on the fly, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because I had not heard that it had been repealed, but I think it was repealed and replaced with, with a resolution, still establishing a heavy presumption in favor of department directors living inside. Yeah, so, I, I, I just, I wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding that there hadn't been a subsequent resolution. So, there's still policy in the city of Helena that people should live inside city limits. Councilmember Kennedy, is it your intention in here to include a waiver, like the previous Helena resolution?
Yes.
So, the concern that, that Councilmember Shaw's bringing up, I mean, it could be granted, is there a concern, I guess, that a waiver wouldn't work? That a city manager who really wanted to recruit someone who had a very valid reason couldn't say, you know what, for this reason, we're going to waive this? And I thought the Helena one also exempted anybody who was currently an employee as well.
Correct.
And, and you would intend to include that as well?
Yes.
So, current department directors would not be affected, and new recruits could be waived if the balance of facts favored that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't getting facts twisted.
And just, just to follow?
But what, but why not?
Unless there's a.
There, there is.
That's called out.
Section 6 is the.
Oh, I see, so the waiver here, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to talk over top of you.
No, 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 go ahead, you raised.
The waiver here in Helena only applied to people who were already county residents, so we might want a waiver that's more expansive and based on merit or recruitment or something to that effect.
Certainly recommend that.
Yes, and I, this is just showing that people that do apply, we really want you to be living in the city of Billings, and to have this, the city manager has every right to waive and, and bring someone in and employ him. But, you know, this shows the people in the city of Billings that what we would do is, we really would like you to live in the city, enjoy the city, and, and not be someone that lives outside the city and just drives in every day. I think it's just important that you become part of the whole city.
So, I, I think with understanding that, that, that's important to me. I don't want a waiver in there that just allows it to be waived willy-nilly, because then why have it in the first place? But I do think a city administrator and a recruit to the community, that could be a really important fact-finding, if they're saying, listen, we're going to live in Yellowstone County, because we're horse people, fine, but if they say, we want to live in the county, or we want to live in Stillwater because we can't find housing, or it's too expensive, or there's something onerous, or we don't feel safe, that's really important information for us as council members to have. So, I think as long as there's a reasonable waiver that doesn't create a barrier to employment, but still expresses our, our belief in this community, and our belief that the people who are key decision-makers should be invested in the community, I, I would be comfortable with it.
Okay, Councilmember Ashlar? And Councilwoman Bernice?
And I, I'll be honest, I struggle with this, and I hope this doesn't get me kicked off any Christmas card list with my seatmate. With the way that we operate currently, with council and the administration, if we include a waiver system, and we put a waiver in place that's directly under the purview of the city administrator, we undoubtedly will be battling with the city administrator the very first time that that waiver system gets put, gets used. Inevitably, we will do that. And, and it feels to me like, if, if we're going to do it, we just need to do it. All-in, no, no waiver process, if you're already grandfathered into the system, then you're already grandfathered into the system. But the second that we put a waiver system in place, we are setting ourselves up to have conflict with the administration. I don't care if it's this administrator, or the next one, or the next one after that, we, we inevitably will have a fight unnecessarily, with the best of intentions about the use of a waiver. That, that's the way that these things work. And I'm more motivated to hire the best, most qualified people. If they live 10 miles out of town, because they like to walk off their porch and shoot their gun and, and take a leak off their deck, and they can't do that in the city, more power to you. I'd love to do that, too. But I'm more qual, I'm more concerned that we get the most qualified person. Residents in Yellowstone County spend their money in our community. They contribute to our local economy, regardless of whether they're inside the city limits or five miles out of it. They're coming here, they're doing business here, they're spending their money here, they're shopping in our stores, they're, they're turning over in our businesses, and I, I'm just concerned that, that if we're going to do it, and we don't do it 100%, and we create this waiver window, that we are inevitably, the first time that that gets used, going to be sitting here fighting about why that waiver got used in this instance, and was it justified? In my perspect, from my perspective, it wasn't, from your perspective, it was, and from the city administrator's perspective, he's just trying to get good people. I, I'm going to struggle to support this with a waiver language, and, and I, I think I'm a no at, at this stage of the game.
Very good, thank you, Councilwoman Bernice?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I actually agree with a lot of what Scott said, other than taking a league off the deck. The, the, I guess the question I had is, is really for Chris on this, the, Chris, the, 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 why is it an employee can't own a horse in the city of Billings? What, what is it about our zoning, what is it about our, our city that prevents that? And, and aren't we the body that can change that?
All, all of the thought I put into this, I did not think about the horse question. I, I believe you have an, or, I mean, you're in control of the ordinances and the rules in the city, the city council is, so there may be an ordinance there, there that says...
If, if you dress the horse up as a chicken, it's good.
Exactly. Chickens have made their way in, but I think lots of other farm animals have not.
Yeah, I mean, so we're the body that can do that. If we, if we're finding that so many people have to have horses, then we should be developing, allowing developers develop, you know, acre, five acre, 10 acre properties in the city of Billings, and that's what we do. So, I, I, I don't think the horse issue is, to me, is a real good, I think we're the ones preventing that from allowing people, if that's, if that's what they're doing. But I do agree, this could, if we have a requirement, and I'm looking for a job, if it, the requirement's right there, is you must live in the city of Billings, and I happen to have horses, I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to look for a waiver. And so, it, we're going to lose some applicants when they're looking, in my opinion. If you do it differently, where you give them a preference or some type of incentive, I, I think that's probably a better way to say that, well, if you live in the city of Billings, you, you get X, Y, Z, or something like that, versus a, a penalty. So, I'm not, I'm not really keen on this, especially in this job market. This is not a market where you, people are just knocking down the doors to come in. And so, I think we need to really reconsider how we're going to work in this market. Maybe, maybe 10 years from now, if the job market's turned around and people are knocking down the doors, maybe, then you could do something like that. But I think this is going to hurt the city's ability to find good, top employees. Again, if you want, I think if we want to go with, we want to incentivize them to, to live, live in the city, that's incentivize them in some way through some pay, pay compensation plan, or something like that, or preference. If you've got two candidates that are equally as good, and one says they're going to live in the city, great, you've got six months to get in the city.
Very good. Any further discussion before we proceed about Councilwoman Rogers, Councilmember Rupesas?
I'm sorry, I just feel like it's a little bit hypocritical of us to sit here and say only our best candidates are going to want to live out of the city. What, that doesn't make sense. We've got great staff that will be moving up into positions, there's, there's sections being taken into account for staff that's existing that can be promoted up, and I think Billings is a great place to live, and it's on us to make it that way. So, I'm a, I'm in support.
Very good, Councilwoman Rupesas?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I actually had a conversation with Chris about three and a half years ago on this very topic, and I asked him, and we talked about it for a while, and I philosophically feel that, yeah, department directors probably should live in the cities. But what I haven't heard is the existence of a problem. What problem are we trying to solve? I've never once heard any implication that we got less than stellar advice, less than stellar performance, any, any issues related from somebody, some of our few directors, assistant directors, living outside the city limits. So, given the absence of a problem, and given the potential introduction of problems with hiring, recruiting, and, and anything of the sort, I'm not going to support this right now. I mean, if, I think if we were able to articulate something that, you know, was an actual issue, I'd love to have that conversation, but over the, the three and a half years, four years that, that I've been, you know, at this table, never once has that come up, that somebody who lived outside of the city did something that was not in the best interest of the people in our city. So, I'm, I'm a no on this, if it passes tonight, I'll be a no on it when it comes back at a regular agenda.
Very good, thank you. Anything else before we proceed to a vote? Ready to vote? Chris, is there something you, you?
I would present one other scenario. So, this references someone who already works for the city, who happens to live outside the city, which is probably what's happened with each of the directors or assistant city managers, city administrator, happen to be here, already working for the city. I, I do think there are other people who live in the, live in our community, whose spouse, wherever, they are here and they are working, and they may be living in Shepherd, they may be living in a surrounding area, and, and the choice for them to relocate will keep them from applying for the job. Just earlier tonight, I gave you an announcement for our new IT director. We had five finalists we interviewed, three were from our community, two were from out of. we interviewed, three were from our community, two were from out of state. I don't know if the two other candidates who were from our community happened to live inside or outside of the city limits, but they would have been, that would have been a question that I would expect may limit because of a whole lot of other issues. Children, children who are in school districts, parents of child age kids, things like that. In no way, shape or form, not the commitment to live within a community because their, I mean, their passion for what they do. I've never had a department head who didn't believe in the city they're working for. So, so I do believe it is a necessary restriction, but that, that's your call. I would also encourage you to possibly talk to the city elected officials in Helena. Not just those who are there today. They chewed through three or four city managers after Tim Burton, inside of a very short period of time, almost every department head, and had a lot of chaos going on in their community. I have no idea of this restriction, if it's perceived as contributing to that or not. But they went through a lot of turmoil before they hired Tim back in 2023 to right the ship, get things back on track and, and move the community, help as a partner moving the community forward. So I just ask, I, you have, I ask you, please, as you write, as you consider this, take it very seriously. I think it's a big deal. And all due respect, I, I want to help write it well. I don't want it, it is not going to help us if it's got vague language or something in it. It needs to be the intent of what you pass if you're going to pass something. So as much as there's a lot of stuff going on, particularly that our legal department is dealing with and we're dealing with administratively, the worst thing I think we could do is pass something that we think is poorly written, a lack of clarity. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Council, we're ready to vote. We'll proceed to a vote. Just wanting to show our hands again. Is the motion clear enough? Okay. If in favor of the motion, which brings back to a future business meeting, please raise your hand. Voting in favor, councilmembers Kennedy, Rogers, Owen, Tidswell. If voting in opposition, please raise your hand. Councilmembers Shaw, Rupes, Boyett, Aspinlyter, Nice, and myself. So the motion fails, four in favor and six opposed. Very good. Good discussion. And one thing I do think we all agree on is that it's still good to encourage everybody to live in the city as a, kind of a, a no-brainer unless there's other factors. Very good. That concludes then the second item and highlight upcoming agenda items of council interest. Chris?
You got a number of land use issues coming before you a week from tonight. Nothing out of the ordinary, nothing of surprise. We continue to work on the final touches of the capital improvement plan as well as start the zero-based budgeting conversation with the Budget and Finance Committee. I think those are, are our most significant issues in the near term. Thank you.
Very good. Council discussion. Public comment on non-agenda items. Anything not on our agenda just now? Mr. Nelson?
Kevin Nelson, forty-two thirty-five Bruce Avenue for next week, meeting on the TIF expansion. You know, you, you, you sit here and you, you talk about how important public safety is and mental health. Over all county taxpayers, fifty percent of every county tax dollar goes to either the jail, sheriff, mental health, district attorney, or the public health mill. So are you for it or against expanding the TIF and capturing mills and diverting those mills into something other than what is intended? It really hurts public safety if you're truly involved in concern about public safety. Seven fifteen, forty-two twenty-one, it says, have a public meeting with the opportunity for public comment regarding the effect on the county or the school district. Now you're conflating public hearing and public meeting with your proposal, your ordinance next week. I don't think they're sep, I, they're separate items. You never even had a formal adoption of the TIF until the twenty-second of September, but you had a meeting with the city public school on August fourth. It wasn't even on anybody's radar. You're over there saying, oh, this is a public meeting, but you haven't even had a resolution yet? You had a resolution with the county at a discussion meeting on the fourth of September. No one even knows this stuff is going on and all of a sudden this is going to quote qualify? I don't think so. The statute is pretty clear that there's going to have to be a public meeting with opportunity for public comment on the effects on the county or the school district. I don't think you've met that statutory requirement. How you get there, I'm not really sure. But I think there's actually a statutory, it was, this law was put in place in seventeen. The legislature was clear in its intent that the other taxing jurisdictions were going to be involved in this process, and I don't think you've involved them. And I don't think, and more so, that the residents of these, the other taxing jurisdictions were the really ones that have to bear the burden of this and they were never notified or were never aware of this expansion and never given the opportunity to submit their public comment, good or bad. Alesian School District, you're going to read that. I went out there and I says, why don't you have them draw the boundary back and take Alesian completely out of the district? Hell is going to rain down on you guys when they figure out that an Alesian School District, a school district, one to eighth grade, has their taxes diverted for thirty-eight years. Almost five grades go through that district out there with diverted taxes. Like I said, hell is going to rain down on you guys. Now they said they couldn't contract the district because you've obligated bonds to their taxpayers to pay your city bond. They didn't even know they were needed, they didn't even know the bonds existed and all of a sudden you're obligating their taxpayer, payers to bonds of another taxing jurisdiction unaware. I think there's going to be some, some interesting conversations in Helena in the next legislature. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Other public comment on items not on our agenda? Is there any other public comment on items not on our agenda tonight before we close the public comment period? No one's coming forward, so we will close the public comment period and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.